Children come into care for a variety of reasons. They are often children where within their own family there has been a history of abuse or neglect. And families cannot manage them safely, so they have to be taken into care. If it's decided that the family cannot then safely care for the children enough for them to have them back, those children may well be placed for adoption depending on court decisions. So a lot of our children who we are looking to place for adoption will have had some trauma in their background. They will all have suffered some kind of separation and loss because they have been separated from their birth family. But they are also likely to have suffered neglect or abuse. And by that we mean physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse. Or they may have been witness to domestic violence, a variety of issues really.
Some of the behaviours they show might be very different from those you might expect from birth children. And that's where we become involved. Some of the behaviours you might see involve being perhaps overcontrolling. If these children have been in an environment where they've had to look after themselves, they've learnt to find things for themselves, not to depend on adults. And this sort of behaviour goes through with them. And so when they first become adopted, it may be that they want to be in charge. They're not used to a parent being involved, and that can be very difficult. And it's about understanding their background and understanding what makes children behave as they do. Other behaviours they show can be linked with food. So if a child's been neglected, they may not have had been fed. They may have been hungry, they may not have been given food where they want it. And again, the result of that would be that actually they may go around wanting food all the time, or wanting to get it themselves, or to keep it, or store it. And I think the difference in understanding the background is you see that as a need rather than these children are stealing. It's about looking at their needs and understanding why they behave in that way.
The history isn't particularly good, the same as any child up for adoption isn't going to be. There were drinks, drugs, violence, neglects, quite a lot, and it's hard reading, it's hard reading.
I remember thinking, can we make this work? Is this going to work? And the boys have been quite badly neglected in their home life. And so it really affected them emotionally. And so we weren't sure initially whether we'd be able to help break down some of that damage, I guess, that had been done from their early childhood. But as the years progress, you suddenly see little bits of confidence coming and a little bit of growth coming, or a breakthrough moment. And I think those are the things that bring you the greatest joys really, when you see them overcoming a little emotional hurdle and suddenly see them finding the confidence to do something that they'd never have done. And yeah, they're the moments when your heart beats with a bit of pride and, you know.
I remember meeting my daughter, it was just before Christmas, she was just four. Her history's not particularly good, and when I read it, I did, if I'm honest with you, think, oh my gosh, am I ever going to be able to do this? But I thought then of my own history and what it looked like on paper, and decided obviously to meet her. And you have to sort of take a chance. Social services took a chance on me with my history. And she's just done amazingly well considering her background, amazingly well, and she's an absolute joy.
Children who've experienced trauma, especially in their early years, it will affect their development. And so these children may well have behavioural issues or emotional difficulties born out of the fact that they've experienced this trauma early in life. It might be that they can be sometimes aggressive, it might be that they're very withdrawn. We can have different ends of that spectrum. But it is likely that all children will have some attachment difficulty because of the lack of quality in the parenting that they have received from home.
When I first met my daughter, her speech wasn't very good, she couldn't pronounce words. She didn't know how to feel, she was very, very nervous, very nervous. Looking at the foster carer every couple of minutes to check she was doing the right thing. I could tell she was a really lovely little girl, but she was just very, very worried, as any child would be. Their only experience of a birth parent is a horrendous one. And suddenly they've got this new mummy or new daddy coming along, and it's very daunting for them, very daunting.
So when children first arrive in the home, they may present as quiet, well behaved. And people often describe that as a honeymoon period. It's not what they're expecting and they're quite pleasantly surprised. But this can sometimes reflect that uncertainty, that anxiety. It may be they've come from a background where if they've shown need or they've shown indifference, the response hasn't been a positive one. So they've learnt to do what they're told, to keep quiet, to keep their feelings inside. As they become more secure and feel more welcomed and safe in the environment, that's when the behaviour starts coming out.
We went to see them for two weeks, it was mainly me seeing them. And then, you know, my son would see them and Tim would come with me. And then they moved in. And often children are really, because they're on the best behaviour, because they want to, you know, make you happy and that. And they were really good, and then they start being naughty. Because often adoptive children will start being naughty, as if to say, oh, you know, you're going to send us back, sort of thing. And, you know, it was a big strain. I was on the phone a few times in tears, thinking, oh, I'm not coping. And but it was totally normal, the things I was feeling. And I was, you know, not taken to one, but I was taken to the other child. And, you know, and the social worker was, they were always brilliant, I couldn't fault it at all. You know, and I could always get hold, if I couldn't get hold of my social worker, there was like one on call or something.
If it's something that you feel is really in your heart, something that you feel you want to do, I would say get all the help that you can get, get all the advice that you can get. Talk to people that have done it, that have been there and experienced it. And get as much advice as you can. I mean nowadays you can get onto Google and find lots of good advice there. The reality is children don't come up for adoption for no reason. So usually there are some quite significant reasons, so it's worth doing some research and finding out. I would say make sure that in your own life, your own life is in a good place. I wouldn't say you ever want to adopt because of a need that you've got. I think you're there to meet somebody else's needs. So, you know, are you prepared to make the kind of sacrifices that any parenting is actually? You have to come second and children have to come first in any parenting. So are you up for that and is your life, you know, kind of built around that? I mean, for me as well, it was really important that our marriage was very strong. Any kind of parenting can put a strain on a marriage.
We have children of all ages who we are looking to place for adoption. We have very young children. The reality is though that we do have older children who may have been waiting some time. Some of our children have additional needs, they may have additional health needs, which could cover a variety, again, of issues, long-term conditions, hereditary conditions, those kinds of things. So we sometimes struggle to place children with these additional health needs.
So fostering for adoption is a way of prospective adopters being approved as foster carers, which enables them to care for children at a much earlier stage in that child's journey through the care system. So the child is placed with those prospective adopters as foster carers. And that would be normally whilst the court proceedings and any assessments of birth family are still going on. The benefits for the child are huge in that the child can be living with its new family, its adoptive family, very, very early on, building those attachments, building those relationships, and having the sort of early childhood that we would want for all of our children. The benefits for the adopters are that they can care for that child at a much earlier stage and generally can care for a much younger child. The assessment process is very similar, but there would be a much more focus on how you can work with the child, with professionals, potentially with birth family while those court proceedings are still going on. The downside is there's a very slim chance that that child won't stay in that family and could go back to their birth family.
Lots of people do want babies, but I'm being realistic now, I'm in my 40s. So I like my sleep, and I'm not saying obviously... But I think when you have a baby, you've got to be up feeding every four hours. And there's falls and against for having a baby and a child, when I took my child on, four. And all I can say is it's absolutely amazing, absolutely amazing, I love it.
We are looking for families who can accept some of the difficulties that these children will come to them with. In essence, what we are looking for is we're looking for parents for our children, not children for the parents. So we're looking for what we might call parenting plus or therapeutic parenting. Parents who can give that little bit extra to make the difference to that child because they have had a difficult start in life.
We always said that we wouldn't have a child that was physically disabled because it's a choice that we're making and we didn't feel that it's fair on our son that, you know, if something happened to us, we died, he'd have to oversee him as he grew up. And it's our choice to go for that particular child. So we said we'd have, you know, a child with learning difficulties. Because I'd worked with adults with learning difficulties. And I just felt I wanted to make a difference to a child. And plus I'd been in foster care as well. And I used to be really heartbroken when I was parted from my brother because it was always me that ended up in foster care. And so I always really wanted, you know, for siblings.
I think the thing to remember is children, wherever they come from, are difficult at times. I mean, you only have to look at adolescence, the normal developmental stages, what you expect. With these children, there's the additional aspect that their background's been very difficult. Things like identity is going to be more of a challenge for them. So you'll find possibly and more likely at teenagers that they will be showing a difference in their behaviour. It will be difficult and it will be challenging. Some of the behaviours you can turn around, there isn't a magic wand. And I think the important thing is to understand the behaviour and to know how to respond to it.
Realistically, you have to expect that the children we have for adoption will come to you with a range of different needs. We don't take children away from their birth families for no reason. There is always a reason why these children have come into care. If a child has suffered trauma in their early life, it will affect their development. It can affect their behaviour, it can affect their functioning. For example, their progress at school may be a little bit slower than other children. If a child has been taken into care at birth, so has not lived with their birth parents, they will still have suffered that trauma of separation and loss. So there will still be issues even with a child that has been taken at a very, very young age. Sometimes children don't come into care until they are three or four years old. So they will have experienced some considerable difficulty in that time. And will have these additional needs that I spoke about in terms of their behaviour, functioning, their ability to make relationships and make attachments.
My little brother, his initial situation with his family was very, very different to mine. He was taken away from his birth family. And he also was separated from his two older sisters. And whilst he was very young when he came to us, around the same age, two or three, can't quite remember, that did have an effect on him. And I think that has had a bit of an effect on him going forward.
I was adopted very, very young and I knew about it from a very young age. But I didn't make any, there was no reference to it in my life. It didn't really start having any impact, I suppose, until I was about in my teenage years when I was forming relationships myself that it was really spoken about. But I had a very normal upbringing, I was treated, me and my brother, as same as any other family, you know, had your normal squabbles. Even though we were completely different, my adopted brother is not from the same family, birth family as me. And his circumstances are that he didn't want to find his birth family. Whereas the curiosity got the better of me and I did.
Funny enough, I was looking at some videos the other day of her when I first got her and first met her singing, and I was just so proud, I nearly cried. Just the amount that she's come on and the way she pronounces her words and the attachment that she has. She still has attachment issues and she still has issues that come up from her past, which she's bound to. But in reality, she's only been with me about two and a half years now.
We offer lots of support to our adopters. We have various types of training available to help them understand the kinds of children that we would be looking to place. And there is lots of post-adoption support that we can bring in from different agencies if those needs require ongoing support after the adoption is made.
Social services are, they do make sure that you've had some training to deal with children. And if you were thinking of taking on a baby, quite often they would like you to do some voluntary work in a baby unit or in a, I actually went to work in a preschool for a little while. So they do make sure you've got experience and they are there to help you. I would say now, obviously Keely's been with me two and a half years, but she does have issues. And I do find social services very helpful.
Well, I think as a same-sex couple, I don't think we were 100% certain that we would be received in the same way as other couples. But we did do a bit of research, we looked at a few different authorities. We found Southampton to be the most inclusive one when we went to the information evening. They just seemed to get it really, so that's kind of why we chose Southampton. And then all through the assessment process, we had a really nice social worker. And we both got on really well with. You have to share quite a lot about yourself and your history, so we felt comfortable doing that with her.
So my husband is Jamaican and I'm obviously English. And when we had our first child, he's our birth child, he's now 23 and obviously he's mixed race. And when we approached social services, we were very open-minded and social services were very welcoming about the fact that we were a mixed-race couple. In actual fact, they said it could be quite hard to place mixed-race children. And so then we went on to have four children, all of mixed race. And all those children have the same birth mum but have different fathers. And they're all very, very different in appearance, but very much a family.
There are very few barriers nowadays to who can adopt. We aren't just looking for married couples. You can adopt if you are married, if you are unmarried and living together, if you are a single person, you can adopt. If you are in a same-sex relationship, there is no problem. If you are from different ethnic backgrounds, you don't have to be rich, you can be in rented accommodation, you can be living on benefits and still be able to adopt.
I don't think that we have experienced any discrimination for being a same-sex couple. And I think, I mean, in our community, we're just like anyone else. In terms of our approval, we were just like anyone else. And we know other gay couples that have adopted and, you know, doing really well. We know single adopters that are doing really well. I think it's all about wanting to love a kid and open your home to them. And I think if you can do that, it will always be hard at times, but that's just parenting. And I think once you've made that decision, you know, then adoption's a fantastic thing to do.
It was, I think the social services are really good because they were very open about the fact that they didn't, they weren't worried about our age, they were more worried about whether we thought we could actually cope with it. And they just wanted to make sure that we knew, you know, that we had taken into account the fact how old the youngest would be when I was, you know, a particular age. And they were very open about it and it was really refreshing that, you know, they were not, they didn't put up age as a barrier.
My role on the panel is as an adopted person. I was interviewed to come onto the panel and I am there just to add an individuality to the panel. I haven't got any other axe to grind, I'm just there as an adopted person. I don't think anybody should be, I mean, coming to panel is a bit intimidating. I think sitting on a panel is a bit intimidating. But I enjoy seeing the people come to panel. But after reading all the reports, it's lovely to see people come in and just speak to them face to face. And it gives, it makes our reports come alive in a way.
I mean, I think the whole process from the assessment right the way through, I found it actually really helpful. I think for my wife and I, you don't know what you're letting yourselves in for and you've got no real experience or expertise. And so it was really helpful to help us make a decision as to what we would say yes and what we would say no to, what kind of children we felt we'd be able to parent effectively. And so we had really, actually really good support and, you know, our social workers became good friends. I did say at the end of the assessment process that they knew me better than my own mother knew me because they did ask lots of questions. But it was really, you know, really good, really worthwhile because it made us probe into our own lives, you know, the strength of our own marriage, the kind of wider relationships and networks that we've got. So they were really helpful. And what I would say to somebody that's looking at the whole process and wondering, it can seem really daunting at first because you're opening up a world that is normally quite private, your own home life, your own friendships. But the important thing is it was all for our benefit and all for our good and all for the good of the boys as well. So I think the process, though it looked daunting, actually we quite enjoyed the process. And by the time we got to the end of it, we felt a lot more confident that we knew what we were up for. And so, yeah, very helpful, very helpful process.
Maybe prospective adopters might hold back a little bit. And the thing is, is that what you see as a failure in your life is not quite the same as how we examine and look at it. Because your failure, some positives may have come out of that failure and some of your experiences are very important because it means that there are children out there that have experienced or may well experience similar things in their lives. And so to be really honest, right at the beginning, is really important. What's and all, tell your social worker absolutely everything.
I knew the road to adoption would be difficult because of my past. I'm a single carer, I have diabetes, I used to suffer from depression, I had an eating disorder in my late teens. So I have had a lot of things that people would look into quite in depth. But the thing is with that, I think if you've actually gone past it, if you still have issues, then obviously social services will not take you on because they can't. But if you've actually shown them that you've dealt with everything and you've moved on, then, you know, there's a good possibility that they will be accepting of that, and they did.
So the assessment process will look at your entire life, your own history, your own childhood, the way you were parented, because these things will affect the way you then go on to parent. It will look at things like your support network, who you turn to at 2 o'clock in the morning when you're having a bad night. It will look at your financial situation, look at previous relationships and we will contact previous partners. We look at your work situation and we will contact employers. We look at your health. So you can see it is a very, very wide-reaching assessment. But I think that's only right, I think that's how it should be.
And they do scrutinise you a lot, but they have to, they have to. And they do test you because they need to know that if they place a child with you that has got issues, you're not going to suddenly just say, I'm sorry, I can't handle this. So yes, they do scrutinise and they do test you. But once they've accepted you, then they make it a lot easier and they do help you. They do help you and they're on your side, but yes, they do.
So the initial thing is we're aiming to offer six initial sessions to everybody within the geographical area. So we would offer those sessions. We're also starting a support group once a month, which we would like parents to come along to. And that's when they get a chance to meet other adopters and get a chance to interact and also to have a bit of training and find out what's expected, what they can do at this stage really. After that, they're free to then have some time and see how they get on. But we will always be there as a service to come support them. And it's just a matter of referral or speaking to their social worker.
The plan is already worked out by social services and very well planned. So the first time you meet your child will probably be just for an hour at wherever the child is living. And then slowly, within a week or two weeks, you go up and you do more caring for the child. You might do tea, you might do lunch, you might take them out for an hour. You'll put them to bed, you get there in the morning to get them up. So they get used to you taking over the care. And then that goes on for one or two weeks depending on the needs of the child. And then at the end of that, you bring the child home with you, which is lovely.
Perspective adopters might find it a little bit unusual, but we do have what we call a life story book that is introduced to a child to explain to them all about how they came to be adopted and their life as it is with them and carry on with the adoptive family. In my own experience, I would have really would have found that quite interesting and helpful if I'd had the support of a life story work where I could, my adopted parents would have spoken to me about it and I could have, they could have helped me connect maybe, or maybe not, whatever, or just help me through any difficult times that there may have been.
And they go and get their life story books now and again. I find them on their beds, they've been having a look at them. And, you know, I think that's very healthy as well. So we've been very, very open to the fact that you've got a mum who loves you very much, but she wasn't able to take care of you. You've got dads who wanted to adopt you, but they weren't able to take care of you. So you've got them and you've got us as well. So we've always sort of emphasised, you've got lots of people who love you and want to look after you. But we're the ones, you know, we were lucky enough to be able to adopt you and become your parents.
My daughter knows that she's adopted, I'm very, very open. She knows, she has come up and asked me things about her birth parents and things that she remembers and things that she's maybe heard from her older sister. I'm very, very honest with her because how I feel is I don't want her getting a teenager and suddenly having all her past brought up and it being confusing for her. So I think if you don't make too big a thing of it when she's a child, it's not going to be a big issue when she's older.
What you've got to remember is that they're children. And whether they're adopted children or not, they're going to go through all the things that every child goes through. And you've just got to be prepared for that really. And the fact that you're sharing those children with other people out there, they're not just simply your own. But you've got to remember that they've got their birth parents as well and they're going to be very interested. Usually, some children aren't, some are. You know, you've got to be prepared to share all that and be quite open about it as well. And it's going to be hard work, but it is with all children anyway.
As I got closer to 18, I'd said to my mum that I did want to actually meet Julie. And actually, sort of, it was a combination of meeting the woman that gave birth to me, but also just curiosity on where did I come from? And was I anything like her, like, you know, the nature nurture kind of thing? So I actually became friends with Julie on Facebook, which it wasn't difficult to find her, I knew exactly who she was, I knew where she lived, so that was not a problem. My mum was always been supportive with me meeting them. And offered to come the first time, and I actually said I'd rather she didn't. And mainly because I didn't want her to feel like I was pulling away from her. So it wasn't a case of that I didn't want her there, it was more I wanted to look after her feelings.
Any addition to a family is a change and a challenge and a joy. And for me, we were going to have a big change anyway. We were going to be going from two children to three children. And so in one sense, we thought, well, what's the difference having four? If it means that two boys can stay together, if it means they can grow up knowing their brother, if it means they've got a partner in crime for the rest of their life, and if it means that, you know, yeah, we have to stretch the budget and we have to stretch the car and change the car and buy a 7 litre and things like that. All those material things become small things when you see the relationships that they've got as they're growing up. So I would say if you're thinking, if you think you've got capacity, adding one is a challenge, but adding two isn't twice the challenge.
One day, our son turned and I said, mum, I feel the odd one out. And my youngest one said that, yeah, that's because you're not adopted. And he said, well, actually, I meant because I don't wear glasses.
And he said, well, actually, I meant because I don't wear glasses. And, you know, it was so matter of fact, and we all laughed and...
Oh, it's been outrageous joy and a huge challenge at times, and a wonderful privilege really, yeah, yeah. It's been, I think it's, it's one of those things that you, unless you've experienced it, you'll never really know the highs and the lows, but it's, I'm so glad that we went for it.
I just love children, I just love children. And it is just such a rewarding thing to be able to have the love to actually turn time back for a child. And that to me is worth everything. I'd have them all if I possibly could. Yeah, I absolutely love it, absolutely love it.